Appreciate that the land in which we gather is the traditional on-seated territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation, and we have occupied this territory since time immemorable. Called order, Council Twill, did you want something to say?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to realign the agenda.
No, you have to wait till we get to the agenda, that's number three.
Okay, I'll wait.
Yeah, okay, so I want to just welcome everyone here this evening. It's a fairly extensive agenda, and I know we have a representative here from O2 or Upland, and there's someone on Teams, correct? And Council Dran is also coming in by Teams, so, Council Dran, if you want to ask any questions or make comments, just use the raised hand.
Thank you, thank you.
Are you familiar with that action?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any declarations of conflict of interest? No declarations of conflict of interest? Again, I just want to remind you that on Teams, Nicholas, is it Cole? Is with us, and Bob D., is that another person with us also?
Oh, Bob Dran.
Oh, Bob Dran. Hello, Bob D. Council Bob D. That's your new name there, Councilor. Okay, approval of the agenda. Council McCabe, did you want to speak to the agenda?
Well, Council Twill can move it, I was going to do the same thing as the Chair for Protective and Emergency Services.
Yes.
I was going to ask if we could move the fire presentation, which is scheduled under E, up to A, because we do have many firemen here tonight, and rather than them have to sit through the whole discussion.
So you're moving that?
If we could.
Council Twill, you're seconding it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
Just one.
Yes, just one second. Motion's on the floor, and that is to change E to A, and then all the letters fall alphabetically after A. Yes, it's E, and then, yeah, we have that. Councilor Beck?
Yeah, I was just wondering, can we move D up there too, like, instead of C, like, flip C and D, and just get everything out of the way, and then we can have the official plan discussion all at once. So move the second reading to amend the pedestrian bylaw beforehand, and then the last item.
Second that. Okay, so D goes up instead of C, E replaces A. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Council D, Council Dran, yea, nay?
In favor.
Okay. Okay, so resolutions, bylaw reading, OPA, official plan, reading, presentation. For A is now fire presentation, and we have Chief Tim Mamie here, but I think I should ask the Chair, do you want to make any comments before we take this on? Hold on.
No, we had asked Chief Mamie to make a presentation to committee, just in response to what some of the storyline was in the media. He came in and gave a presentation to our committee, and we felt it would be valid to have the presentation for all of Council, so that's what we're going to do tonight.
Okay. Chief, you ready?
Yes, Your Worship, yes.
Just turn your mic on. Hello?
Thank you, Chair, and Your Worship. Yeah, so following up on what the Chair mentioned, there was a request through the committee to make a presentation, just to clarify some of the information that was provided in different media stories and some misinformation, so we wanted to get that clarified with what type of department Charlestown Fire Department is and isn't. So we can go through some of the definitions here, which will be the next slide, and I'm controlling that. Just to start off with some definitions, under the National Fire Protection Association, you say NFPA a lot in fire service, and I know it gets mentioned a lot in articles and whatnot, so, National Fire Protection Association 1720 is the organization and deployment of fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, and special operations to the public by volunteer departments. So this is a standard that contains minimum requirements relating to the organization and deployment of fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, and special operations to the public by volunteer and combination departments. And combination is just what it sounds like, it's a combination of volunteer and career members. Combination department by definition is a fire department having emergency service personnel comprising less than 85% majority of either volunteer or career membership, which is where we're at. A volunteer department is a department having volunteer emergency service personnel comprising 85% or greater of its department membership. We're just above that ratio. Both of those departments are under the same standard, 1720, volunteer and combination. The authority having jurisdiction, which comes up in some documents, that's just the organization office or individual, the fire chief's office, responsible for enforcing the requirements of a code or standard, and for approving equipment, materials, or installation or procedures, typo there. The application of 1720, the authority having jurisdiction determines if this standard is applicable to its fire department. The city hasn't adopted that standard in accordance with some of the standards and codes that are adopted by different departments within the city, but we strive to maintain and to sustain that standard. Some more definitions, National Fire Protection Association or NFPA 1710 is the organization and deployment of fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, and special operations to the public by career departments. This standard contains minimum requirements relating to the organization and deployment of fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, and special operations to the public by career departments. And the career department by definition is a fire department that utilizes full-time or full-time equivalent, FTE, station-based personnel immediately available to compromise, comprise at least 50% of an initial full alarm response. And some of the full alarm response numbers that are in this standard, as they apply to career departments, which is no volunteers career. Full alarm assignment for a single-family dwelling, you would require a minimum of 16 and maximum 17 with a ladder, and then more as the situation progressed. An open-air strip mall or apartment building, you'd require 28 with a ladder truck, career personnel, and 27 without. And for a high-rise, anything around eight stories, you're looking at 43 max or minimum career firefighters and 42 without a ladder. And those numbers are in that standard, 1710, so, once you start broaching that standard, the rest of the standard comes into play. The purpose of this standard is to specify the minimum criteria addressing the effectiveness and efficiency of the career public fire suppression operations. Entirely different standard from 1720 for combination and volunteer. Engine companies by 1710 are companies that are staffed with a minimum of four on-duty members. For a high number of incidents in an area, you'd have five members on duty, and for high-hazard zones, which we have several of in the city, you'd have six members on duty. That's a 1710 standard, once again, not something that's applied by the city. That's just showing what the career side of the fire service, how it grows out, and how 1710 applies to that. Some further definitions of 17, or correction of 1500, NFPA 1500 is Fire Department Occupational Safety, Health, and Wellness Program. This standard shall contain the minimum requirements for a fire service-related occupational safety, health, and wellness program. The reason I mention 1500 is in relation to some of the comments that were in media as well, for initial attack operations. Shall be organized to ensure that if on arrival at the emergency scene, initial attack personnel find in an imminent life-threatening situation where immediate action could prevent the loss of life or serious injury, such action shall be permitted with less than four personnel. That's important as we talk about shift sizes, which are shift staffing levels, which exist in career departments but don't in the combination departments, but it's important to highlight the importance of that. This is a quote from a board decision, arbitration board decision from 2024, when the last round in negotiations, that the employer has correctly argued NFPA 1710 applies to career departments, and this department, meaning Charlestown, is a combination fire department which falls under NFPA 1720. Unlike 1710, 1720 does not require a minimum of four career members or four crew members. Indeed, it specifically contemplates that a firefighting crew may be dispatched to a fire with only three crew members. The fact that 1710 allows three crew members goes a long way to rebutting the association's assertion that the employer is operating the department in an unsafe manner. As well, the evidence before us is contrary. No members of the department have died in the course of their duty, of performing their duties in over 100 years, and the department has a good safety record. This could be attributable, at least in part, to the fact that the department's volunteers consistently respond to alarms in a timely fashion, and that's exactly why. Talk about platoon chiefs for a quick second before we go back to volunteers. We've recently, through Mayor and Council, had approval in the last two years for two positions each of platoon chiefs, the last two of which job offers are being extended, and we should have all four filled very shortly. They're created in 2425, they're management non-union chief officers to work the 24-hour shifts alongside the three-person platoons, responding in a command vehicle with the platoon or when the volunteers from the other station are dispatched to an emergency. Their response along with the platoon ensures the minimum four-person response to all department emergency responses as a minimum, when everything is working and operational, we'll have that response as a minimum regardless of the need. Population growth and increasing emergency calls demand enhance fire services and department management are currently developing improved response protocols and numerous other fire underwriter service survey recommendations that are still confidential to further improve the robust, efficient, and safe operation of the 1720 combination department. There is more, as we discussed in a closed session with Council, as we went through all of the recommendations, to make moves on some issues that are still confidential, but that will drastically improve our protocols and our operations. The key NFPA 1710 and 20 differences, our 1710 is for full-time career staff departments. 1710 does not recognize or consider volunteer membership or response. 1710 lists minimum staffing levels for the career complement. 1710 relates to approximately 3% of the total fire departments in Canada, approximately 108 of the over 3,600 departments. 1720 is applicable for volunteer and combination departments. 1720 does not list minimum staffing levels as it realizes that volunteer and combination departments may have varied response protocols to get their personnel on site. And 1720 is the standard for approximately 97% of departments in Canada, and also exclusively for those municipalities, but less than 50,000 residents. Couple other differences, just through the NFPA Fire Service Census, the data information that came in 2018, I mentioned the 3,672 fire departments, I mentioned over 3,600, with a mix of career and volunteer firefighters. Approximately 66 are compromised entirely of career, and additional 44 are mostly career, and these are 2018 numbers, of course. The vast majority of the departments are almost The vast majority of the departments are almost entirely volunteer, with 501 are mostly volunteer. Therefore, while the exact number of career fire departments can be categorized as 66 and 44 mostly career, there are also 501 mostly volunteer and 3,061 all volunteer departments. Over 123,000 firefighters in Canada, 71% of them volunteer, 29% career. Just the quick makeup of the department, not so much the org chart. We don't include on this one the breakdown of both districts, but fire chief and deputy chief, the four platoon chiefs consist of the management non-union group, three fire inspectors, and one fire prevention officer, 12 firefighter twos. We only have 11 currently. We have the 12th being filled by competition this week, four relief firefighters, and 94 volunteer firefighters. This is some of the numbers on volunteer reliability through the years. And look at the numbers from 2020, there were 732 calls, over 15,000 responses by volunteers. In 2021, 849, over 16,700. In '22, over 23,400 with 1,100 calls. In 2023, with 1,100 calls again, over 25,000 responses. And in January, correction, December 24, 994 calls and 21,740 responses. Very reliable volunteer base. We go through ebbs and flows, but we never have an issue with recruitment. Having people want to join the department is something that we can hang our hat on around the Atlantic region and throughout Canada. Recruitment and retention is difficult, and we're doing a very good job of it here, thanks to the membership. Just a couple of sum, to sum up pages here, summaries. Contrary to recent media reports, CFD is not understaffed nor being operated in an unsafe manner for its employees or the residents of the city, as proven with the actual arbitration or decision and the NFPA standards and definitions that support our operations. We have proactively created and staffed the four full-time management non-union platoon chief positions for each of the four platoons, increasing reliability, accountability, and safety in all of our operations. Our combination model is not only fully compliant with NFPA 1720, but has proven very effective in meeting service demands for our city and its residents. And the recommendations from the underwriters, when completed, will not only increase public safety and emergency response protocols for the department, but will improve our already very good fire insurance grading status. A couple of other comments. Firefighter and public safety remain the number-one priority for department leadership, and future improvements will further highlight this focus. Providing the highest level of fire and emergency service response for our customers remains the combination department's goal. And maintaining an inclusive and supportive environment for both our volunteer and career members, both externally and internally, is extremely important. Engaging in constructive dialogue with all stakeholders, including our union members, to continue strengthening our department and focusing on future contract negotiations, hopefully not in public, and the improvements to that. Actively and continually supporting and investing in both volunteer and career personnel through training, equipment, and interrogation in the emergency operations of the department, and providing safe, effective, and fiscally responsible emergency services to our community is management's task and one that is wholeheartedly and inclusively approached by everyone in management. In conclusion, our department has members remain committed to collaboration, transparency, and serving this community with integrity. The lack of transparency, respect, and acknowledgement of our dedicated and professionally trained and experienced volunteers in recent public comments directly and negatively affects their passion and commitment to the city and needs to be and needed to be corrected immediately. Addressing misinformation is essential to informing the public of the facts and ensuring department membership is properly supported and appreciated while preventing deterioration of public trust and confidence in our very historic and proud department. And that concludes the report, Your Worship.
Thank you. Fire Chief Tim Mamie? Any questions? Good. Counselor Ptert, Counselor Twill? Well, someone should answer the phone.
Thank you, Your Worship, to the Chair and to Chief Mamie. Chief, I had an opportunity to attend the recent convention that was held here in Charlestown as an invited guest. Also had the opportunity to engage in some discussion around a number of members in regards to the, I guess, the different challenges faced with 1710, 1720. And I don't profess to certainly know all of those. And I was more just trying to take the opportunity to educate myself and to learn a little bit of it more about what was being discussed or what is being presented in front of us. There was, you know, some, to me, it appeared to be some compelling arguments on that side. And then here this evening, seeing this presentation, obviously there's some compelling arguments here as well. So where does that leave me? It kind of, for me personally, puts me in the middle of trying to figure out kind of what I'm being asked to do here other than to, you know, listen to both sides of the story. I'm not sure what is coming forward to council, if anything, if there's going to be a request, if there's going to be union negotiations. And I'm certainly not trying to interfere in any of that, the negotiations. But yeah, I kind of, I'm kind of a little bit at a loss as to, you know, tonight's presentation, is this to merely show us that there, you know, that we're in good shape and things are good? And everything that I heard from the conference that I attended or the meeting that I attended, I guess whatever call it, that there's no value in that discussion, I guess? I'm just trying to understand where I'm at now in between both of these situations. I'm not sure if that's a discussion here for anybody, to the Chair, or if this is just, you know, because as I think about it more, you know, as an organization, do we, you know, do we not want to strive for higher standards? And if 1710 is the highest standard, would that be not something that we're looking to strive towards? I don't know. So I guess that's kind of where I'm at in my thought process here. I thought it was important for me to say something here this evening as I attended that meeting. And I did engage in a number of conversations, not only with Charlestown Fire Services, but also other firefighters across Atlantic Canada and even broader. And the stories were quite compelling as to, you know, the needs of more firefighters and four in the truck type of thing. So I guess I'm asking, you know, for some clarity as to where do we go from here on this? Is this trying to just set the record straight for us and then we're done? Or are we looking to, into the future? Do we want to move towards something like this? Is that something that's none of our business? I guess I don't know, right? So I'm trying to get some clarity on that. So thank you.
So Counselor McCabe, you're the Chair, so do you wish to respond, please?
Well, I think the reason for tonight's presentation, Counselor Mataris, is because of what was portrayed in the media. For me, it was concerning because I needed validation and confirmation that we actually are operating, and the residents of our city needed to have some confidence that, when I read the article, it certainly would have led me to question, are we doing enough? So when we had asked for this presentation, which gives a different perspective, as you've indicated tonight, is there, is this anything more than that? It was more, again, to instill the confidence that the chief feels confidently that the residents of Charlestown are in a safe space. We do have the underwriters' report that we've introduced too briefly in closed with more work to come from that. But as far as where we are politically, until the ask comes, I don't really think that, other than to re-instill confidence, it is more of a union operational kind of thing. And CAO, maybe you're wrong, but if you-
Could I just ask, is it all right to refer to the chief?
Whoever wants to answer this.
Chief Mamie, do you want to just?
Certainly, yes. Thank you, Worship, and through the Chair to Counselor Mataris. Yeah, I wish I had had the opportunity to attend that event, too. I would have potentially learned some different things and heard some stories as well, which would have been a pleasurable experience, I'm sure. What tonight was about was explaining to all members of council what type of department we are here in the city of Charlestown. It's not the ask of anything. There'll be some asks coming to Mayor and Council through the Fire Underwriter Survey, the report that we've discussed in closed session. That's down the road. This is explaining exactly where we're at today to, once again, as Counselor McCabe addressed, to address some of the misinformation that's been out there, to put people's mind at ease, to know that we are operating here. It's not about not wanting more firefighters. It's about a couple of different standards, and it's about what a municipality can fiscally, responsibly do, and also what type of service levels they're able to provide. And that's what the underwriters tells us for one thing. So that's what tonight was about, though, if that answers that question.
Counselor Twill?
Is it on? Okay. First of all, I want to welcome the firefighters here to the proceedings and the presentation that was just given by the fire chief. Counselor McCabe, you said you wanted to invite the fire chief into the meeting. He's a part of your committee to give a presentation, to clarify some of the, as you pointed out, what was in the media. I think it'd be advantageous for your committee to also hear from the firefighters as well as to what their concerns are, what their suggestions are, what their recommendations are. You know, I've watched over the last couple of years our firefighters making presentations to the standing committees at the provincial level, and I've asked the question, how come they're not making presentations at the committee level and here at council? I never did understand that process. So with that in mind, as you know, I brought the issue up at the last city council meeting. That was the night after presentations were given at the Charlestown Hotel. At that time, when I brought it up, I was shut down on the assumption that it was a negotiation issue. To be clear, I don't believe it is. City council, not the union, not the chief, sets the staffing levels and determines the type of fire responses we provide. There is nothing in the collective agreement that prevents the city from hiring more firefighters at any time. Staffing discussions are squarely within the authority, our authority, city council's authority. I've spoken with firefighters from across Atlantic Canada and into the United States from both career and composite departments, just like ours. Not one of them told me this is about eliminating volunteers. They all said the same thing, there's room for both. And this is about safety, nothing more, nothing less. I had the privilege of hearing firefighter John Bell's close call story firsthand. You know, Counselor Mataris talks about, you know, compelling, compelling presentations or compelling stories. Well, that was very, that was pretty compelling to me. And it had, I got to tell you, Chief, it had a real, it had a real impact and affected me personally, listening to that presentation. That video has now been viewed by 75,000 people. We owe to them and to this community to take these concerns seriously and investigate them without any type of preconceived notions or any bias. I've compared the union's position to the chief's statements, and here's what I've found. The union has never once asked to turn Charlestown into a fully-career department. They're asking for one additional firefighter on the first responding truck to meet the minimum safe standards for first response. That standard is backed by the NIST, the National Institute of Standards and Technology, the Metro Fires Association representing fire departments in North America, the International Association of Fire Chiefs representing career, composite, and volunteer leaders alike. All these organizations agree, four-person careers, I'm sorry, four-person crews save lives. Now, since that presentation that was given a couple of weeks ago, and just in the past week, we saw it play out in Fall River, Massachusetts. After a tragic fire that claimed nine lives, their mayor and council acted within days, mandating four firefighters on every truck. I'll say that again. Their mayor and council acted within days, mandating four firefighters on every truck. They didn't wait for another report. They didn't debate it for months. They did what was right. Charlestown welcomes 1.5 million visitors a year. Since 1982, we've lost 26 people to fires. We don't act, it's not a question of if, it's a question of when. So I'm asking, why ignore these facts? Why are we dismissing the advice of the experts that live experiences of our own firefighters? This isn't about union versus management. I want to make that clear. We all need to be pulled on the same rope. It's about public safety, firefighter safety, councilor's responsibility to leave. We have the authority. The time now is to use it.
Okay.
So.
Yep. It's just your five minutes are up there, Counselor Twill.
I just got 40 seconds.
Okay. So the line is here, keep going.
Okay, so again, I don't see this as we versus they, they versus us. I see this as us working collectively, and there's an old saying, strengthen numbers, strengthen numbers. I really believe in my heart and soul, we need to add another firefighter so that when that truck leaves the station, there's four, not three, four. It's not an unreasonable request. It's being proactive, and it's doing the right thing.
Thank you, sir. Counselor? Can I just, can you, I know, but I'm having difficulty with getting this up there.
Sorry. Counselor Twill, I agree. I mean, if what we need to be safely operating within our city is what is being said, there's got, but that's, they have to negotiate that, and they have to bring that back to us during budget time, during those asks when we're determining. We heard today, there is a fourth person that responds. We heard that just a minute ago. The newly hired platoon chief is part of the four-man team that does respond to fires. If something's not proper in that, staff have a process to follow within the city organization, through the HR and different areas, right? If things are, if it's a we-they thing, it's unfortunate, and hopefully that can be fixed up and rectified because I'm hearing from the chief, who's the chief of the department, that the station's operating safely and the residents of Charlestown are safe. I don't know. It's not up to me to determine whether or not who's right and who's wrong.
Just one second. Okay. I didn't say that to you.
No, I'm fine. You know, I don't think this is a venue to discuss this.
No. Counselor Bernard, you're up. No, Counselor Bernard, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I, all I can talk about so far is my experience. And my experience here has always been every time we have our budgets, budget discussions, the fire chiefs have always been pushing for whatever they need for safety. I can tell you, because I experienced this year as chairing the budget discussions for this year's budget, I can tell you that even when we were looking to make some cuts to balance the budget, Chief Mamie was pushing hard for the, for the two, I think it was two platoon chiefs. So even when we were in a deficit budget trying to find ways to cut, there was no way he was letting that loose. So I would assume that if there was a safety issue, that the chief of police would let us know. So if he feels there's another police officer, two, sorry, fire officer or second fire officer needed, that he would certainly ask for that in the budget. So. But right now, just that's been my experience. Anytime we needed a new fire truck, or anytime we need any new equipment, so on, it's always been brought to us as this is what the department needs now as far as the safety issue. And like I say, I know deliberations of the budget that we just passed, that was a big push for the platoon chiefs to make, to have the four.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Ptert?
Thank you, to the Chair. I just wanted to circle back to say, yes, thank you. Some of my questions were answered there. But I just want to play on a comment there, you know, in regard to whether or not this is the place to have this discussion. Excuse me, I think it is in the sense that we're having the discussion. There's a presentation here tonight for a reason, and I think that goes back to my question is, you know, we're here being given this information for a reason. It's either one, to put something to rest, or to determine where we go from here. And I think that's where I'm trying to figure out is where do we go from here? I've heard two compelling sides of the story. I'm not saying one's right, one's wrong. It's not what I'm debating. I'm not debating safety, I'm not debating those things. I'm trying to educate myself to get more information, to hopefully make a decision when that time comes as to whether or not we support or don't support the addition of additional firefighters. How do we get there is my question. So- So is that as Counselor Twill has indicated, do we need to hear from the other group of firefighters that are here to give there? Just like we just heard here, the other side that's given us some compelling arguments here on why we're safe, and why we're this, and why we're that, and what about the other side? Do we, do we need to hear that as a counsel? And then where it goes from there, meaning either Chief Mamie is going to be submitting something forward on behalf of his department, asking for more firefighters, or he's not, and I don't know if this goes into, you know, union agreement or discussions and so on and so forth, but I feel, I just feel if we just end, if we end here now, I'm not sure what I do anymore on this, in the sense of saying, well, I heard both sides of the story, now I don't know what I'm to do with that information.
Counselor McCabe, I think we're suggested to go back to your standing committee.
Like, they have their process within the operational part of the city, right? I mean, have you been a part of any negotiation between the two sides of the fire department, the chief and the staff?
CAO?
Like, to me, there would be steps before it comes to us, again, on the operational part, if things aren't working well, that our CAO, or I would think, would have some feedback to provide us. I don't think it's up for, what I meant by it's not the venue for us to discuss the two-side debate, I think that we need to, I mean, our CAO is our one staff person that we work with, if things aren't going well, or right, I don't know.
Tonight was to get information, tonight was to get information from a report that was given to your standing committee, and I think what was recommended was that, that the International Association of Firefighters can make a presentation to the standing committee and come back here, correct?
Well, I guess that's maybe the request, is I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear more from the other side. I'd like to know if a little bit more.
Absolutely, if they want to come in and do a presentation.
I canvassed a room of people who shared their perspectives with me, and, you know, I will say that the majority, if not everyone, in that room felt that a 17-10 standard is what City of Charlestown should be operating as. It was overwhelming, the amount of support for that. Okay, that's great, I listened, I've got myself a little bit more educated on what that means, and I want to know where I go from here with that. So do we bring in the Firefighters Association to come in and speak to your committee and give their side of the, you know, their argument? And then do we do that?
I should leave that with you.
Again, we can, I'd like to further discuss that, because if it's getting into more of that union negotiation piece, I don't see that as my role, but I'm going to let you determine if that would be appropriate, CAO.
Chief, or...
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, I think the proper next steps would bring it back to committee, decide at that level whether they, you know, would entertain a presentation from the association, or, you know, is this something that should be left for the budget process, which is a normal process to put arguments through, but gathering the information, I think, is a critical part, so giving people the opportunity to be heard, I think, is important.
Can I just clarify now?
Go ahead.
So I chair the emergency services committee. The chief of the fire department, the chief, meaning like oversees the fire department, is telling us we're operating well, we have a strong volunteer base, we're 17-20, more so than 17-10. We have career fire people wanting to push towards 17-10, but my chief is saying, hmm, we're good, and now I'm going to invite people in to tell me why they're not good. Is that not, is that, like, that to me gets me into the weeds of things that I would hope that who you have as your chief of fire is competent to determine whether or not we're a safe fire department.
Yeah, I'm confident, I think all of us are confident in the chief of fire, and I think the CAO is also the same feeling. So I'm just wondering, can this, again, we're not making decisions, Counselor McCabe, we're not making decisions, it's just the process.
We can hear it. I just, I just want to be fair to the members that are here, that for me personally, or for any of us, there's those steps that, to me, I don't know, if they're, sorry, chief, I don't want to say this, but if you're incompetent, then that's your job to determine that. That's not my job to determine whether or not, like, you know, I mean...
He's competent.
That's how I see it.
Yeah. Okay, Counsel Twill, can you, it's second time, two minutes, right?
Thanks, thanks for the reminder, Mr. Mayor. No, I know, I know, I know, I know. So, I am very civil, I'm very civil. So, so, you know, Counselor McCabe, I think it's a reasonable request. Like I said, I'll reiterate what I said earlier. Our firefighters have made presentations over at the legislature, standing committees, and I've asked the question, how come they're not making presentations to our, there are firefighters, right? So, so, so why aren't they invited in as well? Or they can make a request to come in and meet with your committee, and then to come in and meet with city council? Because the 10 councils are responsible, ultimately responsible for the safety of the city, and to make sure that we have the proper resources, whether it's fire apparatus, whether it's human resources, whether it's fire trucks, you name it, whatever they need, we should provide it. But I want to compare and contrast when it comes to personnel and protective services. Mr. McConnell, who was a former police chief, you know, he was publicly saying we need more police officers. We never ever said that's a negotiable item. We all agreed, yes, we need more police officers. That wasn't a negotiable item. Back in the '24 budget, former CAO said, well, we need to hire more people here in the city administration, $2 million, there was nothing. We spent $2 million, directors and other departments saw an increase in personnel. That wasn't negotiable, we just voted on it, so...
Very budgeted.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, right? I understand that, but I don't see that as a negotiable item. I see it, just like what happened down in Massachusetts. There was a tragedy, there was a loss of lives, and without any hesitations whatsoever, the mayor and the council decided right then and there to add that fourth person. So those, to me, are prime examples of what we can do to bolster our firefighters. We don't need to wait for a tragedy.
No.
We really don't.
Your worship, if I give you permission, for sure, to invite them in to do a council...
It's going to go to a standing committee.
I don't think we need to hear it as standing committee to come back to hear it as council.
Well, look, let's just...
We've heard it as council, bring it to council.
No, 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 Counsel Twill, we'll work this out, you can speak with the CAO. But again, we do have a composite fire department, so we have full-time firefighters, and we have volunteer firefighters. Chief of Police, former chief of police, do we have a composite police department? Well, do we have volunteers and full-timers in our police force? No, we do not. So when we have to add numbers, it's because it's a full-time police force. We have a composite setup here. No, Counsel Twill, I'm just going to end here because we have a long agenda.
The chair, sir.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm wrapping up. Counsel Bernard, wrap up.
No, I was just going to make a comment Counsel Twill made, and I was just going to say, the police hires were because the chief came and asked for them, and the chief gave reasons why he needed them, so we responded. That's what's not happening here. We have a chief that's saying we're good, and we have a union that's saying we're not, so we have to find out what that middle ground is. But I think that's the difference, was the chief of police come in and said, we are below the threshold, we need more officers, the city is growing, so that's why we responded.
Okay, thank you very much there, chief, thank you very much for coming in, thank you. We do have one...
I just have one question.
Oh, do you want to wrap up?
And I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this or not, but I'm just wondering, they were, talked a little bit about the platoon chief or the platoon leaders, do they fight fires as well during the, during their shifts? How do we...
Do you want to answer that, or you want to defer?
I think that clarity needs to come from the chief, because my understanding was they were included in the four.
Chief?
Yes, thank you, Worship, through the chair, to Counselor Yankoff. He can do anything that's required, from writing a performance evaluation, to picking up the hose, to supporting the guy on the inside, to operating the pump, whatever's going to be required is this guy's availability. It's not going to be restricted in any way, shape, or form. If I go to a fire right now and pull my gear on, I can grab any piece of equipment as well. We're all firefighters in the fire service, except for some of our inspection sellers. So, yeah, he can do, or he or she can do, whatever's required at the scene. He's going to be responding in a command vehicle, establishing command, and directing the other three personnel, which is what the fourth person on scene would be doing. And if I could just finish, my presentation tonight wasn't a, this is what we would like to do, and there's a request out there to do something else. My presentation tonight was simply about what type of department we are today, how it operates, how we came through arbitration last with that award decision firmly in place, and how we operate safely in accordance with that underwriter's review, and my recommendations as well that go along with it. When the underwriter's report is complete and we're able to provide all those recommendations, there's going to be growth within the department. I've warned you all in closed session that I will be coming and asking in the coming years, you've all seen that projection, that's not any different than today from when I spoke to you last, just to make that clear.
And that includes an additional fire service facility? Yeah, okay, good, thank you, thank you very much. For A, I think that is one environment sustainability resolution, transit, bridget, excuse me, transit bridging agreement. Okay, do you want to read that, chief?
Your worship, did we, I thought we were putting the second reading to amend the pedestrian bylaw?
Fall after C, that's going to fall before C.
Environment sustainability resolution moved by Counselor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor Norman Beck. The council approved a contract bridging agreement to the existing transit agreement with Trius for 1,545 extra service hours at $78 per hour for a total of $120,510 before tax until a new contract is launched on April 1st, 2026, and that the mayor and the CEO, CAO, are hereby authorized to execute standard contract agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor? Counsel Dran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, do you want to read the, chief, we can go down to B, for public works resolutions? Thank you, Jessica.
Public Works Resolution moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill and seconded by Counselor John McElair. Let it be resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for one 72-inch commercial-grade front mower, lawnmower, the submission from good equipment in the amount of $35,899 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and the CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor? Raise your hand. Counsel Dran?
In favor.
Next one, chief.
Public Works Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill and seconded by Counselor John McElair. Let it be resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, the submission from sojourn signs in the amount of $29,940 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and the mayor and the CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
I know Counsel Ramsey, I think, has a question. Counsel Ramsey?
Well, thank you for that, your worship. Just wondering, how many signs is this? I've been looking over, and I can't see if it's one, two, six, or 12, or what is there?
I think it says 12. 12 units.
Okay, I missed it three or four times. Okay, thank you for that, and we should be looking at that to hit that budget there when we go next year for more, just to have some in place, thank you.
12 units for, enough for six crosswalks. Did you call the question?
Right now, you have a question.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, Counsel Dran, yea or nay?
In favor, in favor.
Counsel McElair, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, next one, sir.
Public Works Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill and seconded by Counselor John McElair. Let be resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for proposals for the bronze memorial statue restoration, the submission from heritage grade in the amount of $23,646 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and the CAO are hereby authorized to execute the standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel, Counsel Beck?
Just a question, I was just looking at the financial implications of this, when it says, because we have two, two resolutions on the same project, one is for the base repair, and one is for the statue itself, correct? If I'm reading that correct? Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so was the total of those two projects 125,000, 25,000 of which is partner funding? Like, would that be, was that budgeted to comprise the two of them? Because the same wording is in each of those submissions. So that was, I'm assuming that was 125,000 for the total for the two, you kind of budgeted that it would be 125,000, I could ask you, the Chair of Public Works?
Counsel Twill, or you want to defer?
Or Riley, whoever...
Nope, it's up to Counsel Twill, what do you wish to do, Counsel Twill?
Well, I'll start it off, what we did, Counselor Beck, was in the capital projects, we earmarked 125,000. But as you pointed out, it's two different quotes for two different facets of the project. So, pardon me.
I guess my question is, it's just kind of like the two, we didn't budget 125,000 for the base, and then 125,000 for the statue, 125,000.
No, no, total.
Total, okay. Yeah, just because the way it's read, worded there, could have been led to believe that maybe there was two separate funding.
No, no, total.
And where did the 25,000 partner funding, what was that from?
Counsel Twill? Just, just for the public record?
It was through, I believe, the Veterans Affairs Canada.
Doug Demaze here, who was working on the project.
I'm sort of initiative.
Doug, can you speak to it?
Sure.
You're the expert.
So we, right now, it's just listed as partner funding. It is from a specific fund, but that announcement hasn't been made yet, so we're not able to speak to it soon, but there will be an announcement very soon about that. But the funding has been confirmed, and we do have an agreement signed and everything. So this work is just to enable us to access that funding, and announcement will be coming very soon.
Super, thank you. And as the background states, this is the 100th anniversary of that monument, war memorial monument, and the last time it was done is when we were on council back in 2001 to 2006, so it's great to see this. Yeah, but there is a war memorial monument bylaw that requires inspection every year. Question? Questions called. All those in favor? Counsel Dran?
In favor.
Okay, sir.
Public Works Resolution Number Four, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill and seconded by Counselor John McElair. That as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for memorial statue granite base repair, the submission from Atwell Morin in the amount of 89,000 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and the CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. Wow, okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Dran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Thank you. Thank you, Riley, thank you, Doug. It's going to look great, hopefully the province house will open in the late, late summer, great addition to the downtown. Glory to the, glory to all. Okay, we have a second reading to amend the pedestrian mall byline, I think the CAO has that in hand.
To amend the City of Charlestown pedestrian bylaw, Part Two, definitions, Part Four, Part Five, Section 5.2, activities on the pedestrian mall, and Part Seven, Section 7.3, penalties assigned by law number 2025-pm-01, and reference the Municipal Government Act of Prince Everett Island. of Prince Everett Island. The second reading and adoption therefore be it resolved that the City of Charlestown pedestrian mall bylaw, which was read the first time on July 8th, 2025, be read a second time, and that the said bylaw now be approved and adopted. Moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall it pass? Counselor Dran, yea or nay?
Pass.
That clears that one up. And now we have, oh, Donna, Nicholas, and Upland, do you guys want to come to the mic? So this is Planning and Heritage Resolution, Official Plan Amendment reading, and I'm going to ask the Deputy Mayor, who is the Chair of the Standing Committee for Planning, Development, and Heritage, to open it up, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is actually not an official plan amendment. This is actually a recommendation from staff and from planning board for an adoption of a brand-new official plan that we have been working on for the past two years or more, exactly. And I just wanted to highlight just a few things, some successes of the process, what we've taken place over the last few years to get to where we are this evening. But I would first want to clarify to anyone that's listening, and I know counselors don't need clarification on this because I'm sure over the past several months, they've read the 205-page document, but just to remember that this is the official plan, and this is the, this is not the zoning and development bylaw. This is the framework to which then will help us proceed to the next step, which will be our zoning and development bylaw, which is what I'd like to call in layman's terms or in grade-six language, the meat and potatoes. That will be coming. And that's when we're going to need council's involvement even more so than we already did throughout the last two years with this official plan. But I just did want to remind everyone that we connected with residents, organizations, community groups through workshops, open houses, town halls, surveys, online platforms. We had three phases of community consultation. We engaged 2,000 participants, included 200 survey responses, 400 comments on the interactive map. We had dozens and dozens of written submissions and stakeholder interviews. We had 20 sessions with city staff and the development community. So the level of participation speaks volumes for how much we care about the people and the community of Charlestown. So we started, of course, by asking those most important questions to the residents, what matters most to you? Then we shared the draft plan and asked what worked and what didn't work. And finally, we're bringing it back with a revised version that reflects your feedback, everyone's feedback, along with updates tied to the Federal Housing Accelerator Fund. But I'll just remind you that although there's funding tied to this official plan, the funding tied from the Accelerator Fund does not make a decision for an official plan. Although it was great to have the funding, this official plan is solid, and I believe it is something that we can work towards. It is not perfect, but it's perfectly clear that it's a document that is a great piece of framework for us to move forward as we embark on our changes to our zoning and development bylaw. So that being said, I'm here to answer any questions. We have our consultants, we have our staff here as well. And if anyone had the opportunity to listen to our planning board meeting last week, we had some really healthy conversation, and kudos to Counselor Beck for bringing up a really important item in there that needed a few extra words, which are happily, you'll see them on page 57, changed in there. He felt it very important that we ensure that we have in there the four units as of right, as, as, what was the exact word? For, as appropriate. And just so we know that we have that direction later on in the coming months as we embark on our zoning and development bylaw. So that being said, I will definitely be supporting the official plan as it is this evening, but I'll turn it over to the consultants and our staff, and also, if anyone has any questions, I will do my best to answer.
Thank you.
Donna, just before you start, please. Donna, can you just, as yourself, and introduce the other team members from Upland, correct?
Thank you, your worship. So this evening with myself, I am Donna Miller Ayton, and I am the Manager of Policy and Heritage in the Planning and Heritage Department. And with me today, we have Paul Deck, and he is from Upland. And on the team's call, we have Nicholas School, and he is from O2.
Okay. Counselor Mitteritt, do you have a question? And Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. It's more of a comment to the deputy. I just wanted to say thank you for kind of highlighting this evening the amount of work and consultation that has been done with the residents of Charlestown on the official plan over the last number of years. I think, like myself and maybe many of you, we've received feedback that we, the perception was we didn't do enough of that, and that we weren't ready for the official plan, that we didn't, we didn't hear from enough people. But, and that was my big concern. I wanted to make sure that we did that as well. So I was happy to see in the report the various aspects of when that occurred, the dates, times, the venues, et cetera. And thank you for highlighting that again here this evening, because it gives me more comfort in also knowing that we did our due diligence and that we consulted across the city in various sectors and with the community. So I'm happy that we're at this stage and we're able to either finalize this this evening and then work towards the zoning and development bylaw, which I think is the real meat and potatoes of, you know, of kind of what most of the concerns that we have are in the future. So I just wanted to highlight that because it helped me know where we are in this process. So thank you.
Well, the deputy's done a great job to this point, so all thanks to her. Counselor Bernard, did you want to have something, and then Counselor Beck?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, just a comment again. And first of all, I do want to thank the Chair, Counselor Yankoff. We had a discussion today where I thought it was awful good of her as Chair to call and see if there's any concerns and going over the, and I did have a couple of concerns. One of them being, you know, we haven't had a thorough discussion on the, on the single lots turning into a four unit or as, you know, we have that as appropriate, and that definition of as appropriate, I know that's still to come. This is the framework. So I'm in favor of this framework. I know we still have a little bit more, more work to do, and that's the part for me, and it's always been the part for me, is how are we going to identify what single lots are going to be allowed to be as of right for a unit, and how do we determine as appropriate? I know that's not here tonight. This is just the framework, and I'm okay with that. I do want to thank the Chair for calling and explaining that, that certainly, I know there's been others, CAO said there should be a lot more of that, and so I wanted to thank him publicly for that. So, and I'm in favor of this right now.
Counselor Beck?
Just a question about how process here tonight. Are we, like, are we, I mean, this is a pretty important document. Can we, like, free-flow the conversation, or is it a sort of thing that we're limited to five and two minutes? Like, is this something, since we are looking at?
I'm looking at the Chair.
Because it is a motion. I'm just wondering.
It's a motion, yeah.
But we didn't read it.
Yeah, no, but when we read it, we're going to read the motion. Very flexible. It'll be very flexible.
Yeah, because I think someone might say something here tonight, and it could prompt someone to think of something. And I'd really like it if we're having a discussion to be able, like, if Counselor McKinnon says something and prompts me to think of something, I think that's important to have, if everyone is in agreement with that.
No, I, as Presiding Chair, let's leave it open, flexible. Good. Could we just to start off, put the resolution on the floor? So CAO Brad, could you please read it? That recommendation came from our city clerk and the deputy, so duly noted.
Thank you, your worship. Planning and Heritage Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Whereas the City of Charlestown adopted its consolidated official plan, PH-0PA.1, in or around July 1999, in accordance with the Planning Act of Prince Everett Island. And whereas the Minister responsible for the Planning Act confirmed the City of Charlestown consolidated official plan, PH-0PA.1, on December 1st, 2005, pursuant to Section 15 of the Act. And whereas a new official plan, referenced as PH-0PA.2, has been prepared to replace the current official plan in accordance with the legislative framework and community planning objectives. Let it be resolved that the request to repeal the existing City of Charlestown official plan, PH-0PA.1, revision 023, and replace it with the proposed City of Charlestown official plan, PH-0PA.2, as attached, be approved. The proposed official plan, PH-0PA.2, shall be made available for public inspection and submitted to the Minister responsible for the Planning Act for confirmation in accordance with Section 14 of the Act. Upon confirmation of the proposed official plan, PH-0PA.2, by the Minister, the City of Charlestown shall conduct periodic reviews of the plan's objectives and effectiveness as outlined in Sections 11 to 15 of the Planning Act of Prince Everett Island.
That's it, Chief? So Paul, Donna, and Nicholas, could we allow them to make their presentation first so that we can get the full presentation and then ask questions? You don't have any questions? No? Oh.
They've already done theirs.
Okay. I thought we were going to get a little bit of show here. Okay. Floor is open. Questions called?
No.
No?
I guess I'm the only one with questions.
Questions called.
No, I know, but I have some questions. I'm just trying to, I'm just looking to get some clarification.
No, go ahead.
So I have, I have a few, if you could beg my indulgence here for the next few.
Floor is open.
Could you go to page 46 for me on?
That's the digital copy, right?
On the digital copy?
Okay, thank you.
And some of this is just because I'm trying to understand. I'm supportive of the document. I just want to get some things clarified so that I fully understand them.
Okay, that's why I asked, is the dig?
This is a digital copy that?
Are you going to the planning copy?
Oh, you know what? Oh, sorry.
What's that? Yeah, you're using the copy that we used at plan.
Page 38 of the, is it page 38 of the official plan?
Is it City?
Oh, okay.
It's under, it's under overall downtown policies. Sorry.
Sorry, just one second. Open the official plan. It's part of the OneDrive?
Is it the city?
It's, it's.
The actual 205-page document?
Yes, it's there.
Yeah.
Page 46 is City Initiatives, regulations.
However, okay, so it's overall downtown policies, whatever, page?
Is it 41?
It says page 38 on the, on the plan itself.
Oh.
I'm looking off of, I'm looking off of an, off of an old document that I wrote on, sorry.
We don't all have it.
I know, but under, like, the page of the document of the plan itself is page 38.
Okay, well, I'll go.
Do you have a question, ma'am?
Well, is that the one that says overall downtown policies?
No.
Yep. So if you want to follow, not the page on the document, but the pa, or not on the package, but on the document?
I got that.
Okay. Page 38 of the official plan.
Yeah.
Administer bonus height provisions through the zoning and development to increase flexibility and incentives for heritage conservation measures. I'm kind of wondering about bonus heights and heritage conservation measures. Can someone explain what that means?
So within the downtown designation, the philosophy of the plan was mostly to carry forward all the policies and mechanisms that are already in place. So currently, there is already a bonus zoning provision for certain parts of the downtown. I believe it's on the waterfront in particular, where regular building heights can be exceeded subject to provision of certain public benefit categories. So this is not a, this is not a change in policy, but rather enabling to carry forward what's already established.
Okay. And so would that apply to the 500-lot designation and heritage preservation? Those rules would still be carried forth as overall policies under this?
Yeah, that is correct.
Downtown, plane views, or view planes, under G. Would that be an example on University Avenue or Great George Street when we're talking about coming down? I noticed that they use Great George or University Avenue, Great George Street as an example of view planes. Is that something that's being considered as well to try and protect the overall streetscapes and the existing corridors that we have? Is that what that's all about?
Yeah, so actually, on the following page, page 39, there is also a map from, from the current official plan that's carrying forward there.
Right.
That's showing where exactly these, these view planes are enabled, and Great George is, is one of these, leading to the, to the province building.
Okay. Under J on that same page, mid-block alleyways and the inventory of public domain, what are those referring to?
Yeah, that is a new.
Would be an example of that.
Oh, sorry. So this is a new exam, a new initiative that was brought to us through the public engagement. There is awareness in the public that there are right-of-ways within the downtown which are connecting mid-block between certain streets, so-called back alleys, right, that are in behind the facade of, of main streets in the downtown area. And these back alleys, often even though they're owned by the city, they're not really maintained or perceived as public space. And since we received that comment from the public engagement, we know that there was already an initiative by Public Works to catalog these, these back alleys and come up with ideas how to utilize them potentially as public spaces or in, you know, also in cases where they're deemed surplus. I think in some cases, they have been disposed of. But generally, based on that public feedback, we suggest that there be a policy that these back alleys are inventorized, that the city is aware of where they are and whether they can be put to a good public use or whether they're potentially surplus, just to have a bit, so that's just a policy that's enabling a more structured approach to deal with these back alleys.
Okay. Thank you. Page 58 of the document. Under P, it talks about establishing a medium-density residential zone that allows for gentle densification in suitable locations with developments of up to three stories and one dwelling unit per 115 square meters of lot area. What is, what does that mean?
What page?
It's page of the document, it's page 58.
Thank you. Yeah, so within the neighborhood designation, there are generally three types of zones that, that this official plan enables. So one would be the neighborhood zone with the lowest density threshold of up to four dwelling per lots as appropriate. Then the medium dwelling zone, the medium-density residential zone, which was just mentioned, and there is a higher-order residential zone as well. So through and there is a higher order residential zone as well. Um, so through the iterations of public engagements and staff discussions, um, it was, it was decided that even though the official plan is fairly high level and, um, does not necessarily want to preclude too many decisions of, of the zoning bylaw, but it was established that there was a density cap for this medium-density residential zone, um, established and, um, yeah.
So, would that be what we refer to as missing middle? Is that what we are looking at there?
I think so. I mean, the term missing middle has been used in, in various media rather loosely over the last couple of years. Um, generally, the term describes any sort of infill that is gentle in character, not too intensive on the urban fabric, um, but still allows for the density that provides all these economic effects and, and benefits to the tax base of the city, uh, without being too imposing on, on the urban landscape. So, I think in that sense, um, you can definitely consider that zone as part of that, um, missing middle infill.
Okay, thank you. Um, on page ninety, sorry, page eighty-six of the plan, uh, this is referenced, and it's also referenced on, uh, a little bit later on. Um, the cost for municipal service extensions and expanses to be borne by those who benefit. Is that the, looking at the, uh, construction? We've had discussions here before about, uh, development costs, construction costs, uh, being borne by developers. Is that what that's referring to here? Under, it's on page eighty-six, and then it's again on page, uh, one thirty-one. Page eighty-six, and then page one thirty-one, it was mentioned again.
Through the chair, that's correct. The intention there is for the, to be more of a user-pay model, and that's manifested in the urban expansion designation that requires a secondary planning exercise to be undertaken as well. It's about ensuring that growth pays for growth, and that the city, um, as a whole, isn't left on the hook for the cost of, of new development on the edges of the city.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my last one is on page one seventeen of the plan. Develop regulations to permit freestanding solar arrays on private property as an accessory structure. Is there, is that, um, is there going to be parameters around that, or is it just an as-of-right that I can put up a solar array to serve my own particular needs? How does that, or is, again, this is kind of just a general movement towards that, and that would be outlined in the zoning and development bylaw later? Is that the idea?
Through, yeah, through the chair, your second point's exactly correct. This is about establishing an expectation that we would move in this direction, and then the zoning and development bylaw would provide the specific parameters at a later date.
Thank you. Deputy, did you want to say something? Just?
I mean, if Councilor Beck has done, I can just sum it up, that, you know, he had some great, um, great, um, questions to ask, and it's great that we have the consultants and the staff here to answer those. But just a reminder that, again, this is the framework, and the meat and the potatoes comes afterwards in our zoning and development bylaw. So, so any, any, any concerns, or any, um, all gets flushed out in that preparation and that big document that we will be moving on to in the coming months. But thank you, Councilor Beck. Great, great questions.
Yeah, and just one, the reason I'm asking these questions is because on page thirty, or whatever page it's on, it says the zoning and development bylaw must conform to the official plan. So, what we have in the official plan, although it's going to get flushed out at a later point in time, and I re, I recognize that both of these can be adjusted, both of these can be changed, but it's important for people to understand that this is, there's a direct connection between the two, and, you know, we've kind of always said, because we, we all know the real nitty-gritty discussions are happening at that zoning and development bylaw implementation phase. But it has to be done in accordance with this, and that's, I think, is an important point for everyone to understand. So, we can't, the zoning and development bylaw does not supersede this. This supersedes the zoning and development bylaws. So, what we have in here is very important, and the wording in it is very important, and the understanding in it is, is very important. And I think it's important for our residents to understand what is in there, because that's where we have to make sure that our messaging is clear. So, I did ask these questions for a reason, because I want that point to be reiterated and everyone to understand. Wording is everything, because people, we're going to this. We're going to be hooked to this as we go forward. We're going to be hooked to our zoning and development bylaws. So, how things are written and what's stated is very important. Thank you.
Deputy, did you just want, do you want to just, again, provide some insight, oversight?
I can turn it over to Donna and Mike as well.
Whatever you wish.
But I will just, you know, not to, um, not to take away from anything Councilor Beck said, because he's absolutely correct, but to also remember that, um, although this is, um, this is our official plan, it is still, um, a framework that, 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 you know, if we find, as we venture down with our zoning and development bylaw, and we discover things that we need to amend, amending an official plan is an okay and the right thing to do, because this document will never be perfect. It can't be. And so, we could be back here in the coming months, finding things that as we maneuver through our zoning and development bylaw, that we think, okay, this doesn't quite align the way we want our official plan or our zoning and development bylaw to look. So, we, we could, if we have to do that, but let's hope we don't. But it's great that we have, um, you know, that we're all aware of what we're going into, and we have a lot of work to do in the future.
Michael, you don't want to, you're all right? Is that all right to?
I think that was summed up quite nicely. Um, I would maybe just, again, emphasize the fact that, you know, these planning documents are really, um, there to illustrate the expectation of our community at this point in time. And they're living documents, and therefore, they should be revisited, um, often to ensure that, that expectation is consistent with the current state of affairs in the community.
Okay. Councilor McClear, and then Councilor Bernard.
Yeah, thank you. Just to clarify what I think the deputy mayor is saying and said, and I mean, I did listen to the, uh, planning board meeting, which I got a lot of hair off, uh, your planning board meeting on this, uh, you know, on, on this, and namely, uh, around the four unit and as-of-right thing. But, um, just for clarity, like you said, the, the official plan, uh, we're going to possibly pass this tonight, or we're not. If we do, I'm assuming, hopefully, we do. Um, you know, I'm in support of it personally. Um, but it is, the official plan is something, as you said, that can be changed and amended by council, correct? We don't, like, the province requires the municipality to have an official plan, and, but we also, as a council, independently can amend our OP, correct?
Deputy, I'm just going to, red light?
Yep. So, the, how it will work, that if this evening we, um, support this, and council, um, supports this official plan, it was on for an official sign-off in the minister's office at the provincial government, that could take a few months, because it is a two-hundred-and-five-page document. Should we, at a later date, decide to make amendments, you're absolutely correct, it's council's decision to make those amendments. But again, the process would still be that they would still go through in a, um, a public meeting, and eventually, if council voted for those amendments, it would still then need ministerial sign-off. So, any changes we make, even in our, with our current official plan, any amendment we make to our official plan gets ministerial sign-off.
Okay, Councilor Bernard?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to go back to some things that, uh, like Councilor Beck had made. And the wording is very important, no question. Um, and I know the discussions I had with the chair this afternoon. Um, it's the official plan framework, so the wording is important. But to me, the zoning and development bylaw, that, that to me is what's most important right now, which will fit into this. And if there's, if there's an area, and it's been said here a couple of times, if there's an area that we find the zoning and development bylaw doesn't match up with the official plan framework, we can change that. So, to me, when we, we're passing the framework tonight, but it's not locked in.
No.
If it needs to be amended or massaged, it can be. To me, it's the zoning and development bylaw that's going to be important. That's why I mentioned, to me, like, it's the, those individual lots in residential areas, as of right as four unit, I don't agree with it. So, I want to see how that's going to be as appropriate. And that's why we're not there yet. That's the, uh, that's the zoning and development.
The, the amendment, amendment formula just requires someone to give a notice of motion to make a change. But I do want to acknowledge that, Councilor Beck, those back alleys was brought up, Paul, during some discussions when we had to deed one over, and the idea of one of the residents was to make it into like a walkway that would provide a space for public art. Fits right in there. So, I'm glad you brought that up. Okay, question was called, or question is called by Councilor Ramsey, and seconded by the deputy. All in favor? Councilor Dran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Councilor Twill?
No.
Nine-one.
Come on.
Okay, just one second. What's that?
We have an OTC.
Okay. Another document there, sir? Yep. You want to read that?
Your worship, uh, City of Charlestown amendment of the official plan, PH dash zero PA point two, to adopt the bylaw, PH dash zero PA point two, a bylaw to repeal the current City of Charlestown official plan, PH dash zero PA point one, revision zero two three, and replace with the attached City of Charlestown official plan, PH dash zero PA point two. Be it resolved that the bylaw to repeal the City of Charlestown official plan, PH dash zero PA point one, revision twenty-three, and replace the City of Charlestown official plan, PH dash zero PA point two, as attached, be adopted. Moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff and seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe.
Shall it pass?
Yes.
Councilor Dran, yea or nay?
Pass.
Councilor Twill, nay? Councilor Twill, nay, yea. Nine-one. Okay. Um, is there any more business, like, new business? No? Other special meeting? Yeah, okay.
I have a comment.
Oh, do you have a comment? Oh, yes. Comment from the floor.
And, uh, to me, it's good news, your worship. So, um, early in the, early in the morning, uh, looks like it's around two and three in the morning, there's a number of houses broken into, uh, in my area, mine being one of them. Um, anyway, the Charlestown police, uh, have caught the gentleman and already charged him. So, they, they, I noticed here that they arrested a forty-five-year-old male with thirteen offenses, including eleven, counsel break and enter. You know, when, when your home or your property's been broken into, there's, I mean, I know some of my neighbors in both sides that got broken into were pretty upset this morning, and it's nice that, that is really quick work. And that makes me proud of our Charlestown Police Department, to be able to get that done so quickly. Um, so, I just want to put a shout-out while we're here, your worship, uh, because it's something that we also be very proud of.
Yeah. Good work. Our motto is, great things happen here because of our police, fire, and all the staff. A motion to adjourn? Yeah. All in favor? Councilor Twill, favor? Okay, thank you.